Are you with us, Annabelle?
I'm not on yet.
There's Joe. All right, I think we're all... Annabelle, you have to...
Yeah. We're here.
All right.
It's turned off, yeah.
There's two places, right?
Oh, okay, got that one. Well, that's turned off, too. There we go.
Okay. Well, I think we're ready. We'll go ahead and... Get our board meeting started.
It's... They're both red. This one right here?
No, right here.
Okay.
And then click just... Click that right there.
There you go. Okay, found the other one. Okay.
All right. Now, we're really ready. We'll start with introductions in the room here. Pat Malone, Commissioner.
Zan Ojero, Commissioner.
Annabelle Hara-Meow, Commissioner.
Alyssa Rash, Public Information Officer.
And those that are on, calling in or video.
Teresa Farley, Board of Commissioners Staff.
Matt Leatherall, Department Director.
Lizzy Godwin.
Tryne E. Meldes, Commissioner.
Greg Riddler, Sheriff's Office.
Eric Camilo, Board Recorder.
All right. I see Mary Ottley.
Yep, Mary Ottley, CFO.
Great.
Jen Ambul, Finance.
Greg Verret, Community Development.
Inga Williams, Community Development.
And I see Cody Mann.
Yes, sir, Cody Mann, Corvallis Advocate.
Good morning. All right, are there any announcements?
I would like to make just a brief comment. I... It's hard not to take a moment to acknowledge all that's going on across the country, unrest everywhere. And I want to acknowledge how grateful I am that our community was able to come together peacefully to protest and hold vigils on Sunday this past weekend. And I know that the unrest is not only about systemic racism and systemic injustice, but also just a really fierce resentment of the wealth inequality that's evolving in the country. And it's disturbing. And I hope that we can work together to do everything we can to keep our community safe and to play a constructive role here in Oregon to try and find a way to a better future. So, just had to... It weighs very heavily on my heart.
All right. Any other announcements? Review and approve our agenda. Any additions or corrections? And there are some kind of detail on 8.1 and 8.2 are reports from our emergency response team. But, all right, hearing none. Chair decisions, as it's been for the last eight or nine weeks, there have been no chair decisions since our last meeting. So, Item 5 is our work session. And we have two items that will take approximately 30 minutes each. Proposed amendments to the Development Code. And then at 9:30, discuss amending supplemental budget. So, that, if you would, each can take approximately 30 minutes for your discussion. So, 5.1, the proposed amendments to the Development Code. Lindsey Goodwin, Inga Williams, from Community Development.
Yeah, good morning. So, you may know, Community Development has been working on three code amendment items that had started back in 2018. And we are still actively working on those. And they are taking longer than we would wish. And so, as one route to getting, moving forward, we wanted to focus on those items that are required by state statutes. And when we have, when there is no other option than to adopt code, we have an option in our local code to, instead of going through the normal planning commission hearing and then the board of commission hearing, we were able to take it directly to you. And so, that's what these are. And because they're, the majority of them are related to the farm zone, we thought that they could be kind of the first step in our code amendments to the farm zone related to marijuana and hemp. And so, they would be grouped under that activation or initiation of code amendments, if that is all right with all of you as far as procedurally. And then, as far as the meat of the amendments, there are five, five changes, groups of changes. One of them, what is the permit expiration extension option in both the farm and forest zone. That's where, in addition to the four-year validity period, a two-year extension, and then now they get up to five additional one-year extensions if certain criteria are met. So, anyway, so they can potentially have a very long time to have a, sort of dwelling approval that can be extended up to that long. Any questions about that, those amendments?
I have one question, Lindsey. There is language in the code that states that if there are updates to the code in the intervening period between when the original permit was issued and when the landowner chooses to build, then that permit may have to be reapplied for? I just wasn't sure that I completely understood what happens in that case.
Yeah. Correct. So, basically, I think they must have been thinking, well, if the rules haven't changed, why make them reapply? You know? But if the rules have changed, well, they've had, you know, up to six years to apply for it, so now you have to reapply. I think that must be it.
Okay, that makes sense. Just wanted to make sure I was understanding it correctly.
Yeah, there, in the forest zone, there's the one call out, I guess, that they've made to these future amendments to what's called the forest template test dwelling. Because we know that there are amendments coming down the line. And so, ours don't go into effect, I think, until 2024. Anyway, so they called that one out as... Can't remember exactly, but anyway, so it was like... Oh, shoot. Sorry. That one's a little confusing to me. But basically, they can get that, since we know what the amendments are to the forest template test, we would need to apply those, I guess, at the time that they ask for an extension. Greg, I'm slandering a little bit. Can you hear me?
Yeah, but that's... So, I believe it's that they, the... The legislature knew that those amendments were happening to the forest template test dwelling criteria, and so they included an exception to that. So, if the rules change in the future during the time period that somebody wants an extension of time after the first six years, that invalidates the option to get an additional time extension, except in the case of this set of amendments to the template test that they know are happening. So, just a particular exemption.
That makes sense.
Thank you. So, then the second set of amendments, our second House bill, is for a farm processing facility. Right now, or before this bill, the option was for a 10,000-square-foot structure for farm processing. And then they've added, if you keep that space that's being used for a processing facility to 2,500 square feet, then that can be authorized without applying siting standards. And it sounds like the state, or the Department of Land Conservation and Development has requested for clarification about that because siting standards are very broad. Does that mean floodplain standards? Does that mean riparian standards? Does that mean, I don't know, steep slopes, things like that? Our understanding for our floodplain chapter is those that's related to safety and emergency preparedness. And so, since it's its own chapter of code, that is not considered a siting standard, and so that's why it applies. It's actually its own zone, or overlay. So, we're not concerned about that part. But, anyway, so hopefully next year, that will get, or maybe this year, will get clarified.
I can see how that really broad language would cause a problem in the case of someone going forward with their project without requesting a permit and then having to institute standards afterwards. There's a certain level of ambiguity bringing someone up to code.
Exactly, yeah. I think, well, yeah, I mean, it could potentially be exempt from building permits because I think if it meets certain standards, it can go up to 4,000 square feet and not require a permit. So, yeah, that definitely could happen.
Yeah, if they go through the agricultural exemption process where you don't need a building permit, but you still need a, an authorization testifying that you are exempt, I think that would, that would be equivalent to a permit in the sense that we would not then later come back and say, oh, well, now you need to comply with siting standards because the code has been amended. But if somebody built something without permits, that could be a stickier situation.
And does this cover marijuana and hemp processing as agricultural product?
I believe so, yes. I think one of the reasons they wanted to do this, or somebody requested it, was they didn't want to deal with parking standards and things like that. So, we'll see if it gets used much down here. I don't know. Oh, and we are intending to try to clarify what this language means when we go through what we call our optional code amendments. When we come back to you with our marijuana hemp amendments, which will likely require notice to all the property owners with that zone, or with those zones. Because I checked with the Department of State, Department of Land Conservation and Development, and they said it was a discretionary call, so we would need to have further review. And that's, the goal there would be to clarify that, because right now it says, just if you're using 2,500 square feet of a facility, then the siting standards don't apply. I was like, what if only 2,500 of 10,000 square foot buildings are being used? Like, what portion of that building doesn't have siting standards applied? So, just trying to clarify that. So, that'll be coming in hopefully this summer, is the goal. And then, the next one is the farm replacement dwelling criteria. That has been clarified and overall simplified, which we're very glad about. Instead of the confusing look back to taxation assessment values of the dwelling, now it's a clear date. And so, if a building, if the removal, destruction, or demolition of the dwelling occurred on or after January 1st, 1973, and you can prove that it was lawfully established, then you can replace that dwelling. And that it had the habitability things, intact roof walls, plumbing, wiring, heat source, things like that. So, that's been very, we're very excited about that. Any questions about that one? Yeah. So, then, another one that was very nice to have clarified is nonconforming schools in the farm zone. That one used to be both an expansion of a nonconforming use and a conditional use review. Now, it's just a conditional use review and removes the density and some other requirements that really restricted the size and location of these schools. And so, now it's saying that if they were established as of, on or before January 1st, 2009, then they can expand on property that is contiguous and on the same tax lot as the school. So, it's kind of like, all right, you have a school. You can keep building it right where it is, kind of a thing. And that's going to really help our school that a lot.
I have one question there. In the summary, it says that that pertains only to secondary schools, but the code language seems to indicate that it's all schools. And I just wanted to confirm that it's not just secondary schools, that it's any primary schools. I think it's just, I think it's just in the summary, the packet, that somehow slipped in.
Yes, I see that.
Because it's primarily elementary schools or primary schools here that are in exclusive farm use.
Yeah. Yeah, I know, it's open. Yeah, public or private school legally established. Yeah, certainly not. And the school is a public or private school for kindergarten through grade 12. So, I guess that is K-12 school only.
Right.
Does it have, I guess, I guess we need to clarify, does it have to be all 12 grades?
I wouldn't, oh.
Oh.
It shouldn't have to be, but that's the way it's written. So, we'll need to be sure about that. It says, "The school is a public or private school for kindergarten through grade 12." Well, how many of those exist? Not many.
No, not many one-room schoolhouses.
Yeah.
That is, that is the statute from the state statute. So, may need to be in interpretation or something.
Yeah, we'll double-check on that. But I don't think that was the intent.
Yeah, I doubt it.
What happens if there's a preschool connected with K-12?
Well, it's not listed. That could be considered a daycare or some other use potentially, accessory to the school, maybe. It might be, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, this only had to do with expansion of existing schools. So, yeah, so in that case, I'm not sure what we would do.
We faced this recently up with the Waldorf School, correct? The situation, they wanted to expand their footprint. And it was very, very difficult because they're in exclusive farm use, and they had all the nonconforming language to deal with.
Right, both Waldorf and Kings Valley Charter School have run into this, and we have others that are also NEFU. But those are the two that we've had most interactions with.
And then, the last one is providing for, in the farm zone, allowing a smaller parcel to be created for a utility, for utility facilities necessary for public service. So, just another exception to the large 80-acre minimum parcel size. Yeah, not much forward to that one. All right, and so, so those are the amendments that we're looking to move forward with. And if there's any other questions about those?
Don't think so.
Thank you very much.
So, the next step would be, these would come before you in a public hearing for adoption. And do we have a date set for that, Lindsey?
The 16th.
Lindsey?
Yes.
You didn't mention the one about the accessory dwelling unit?
Oh, yes, thank you very much, okay. Yeah, that's kind of a key one. So, on the, well, the household 2001, that stated that we could not restrict accessory dwelling units to owner occupied. So, neither the house nor the ADU can be required to be owner occupied. So, that has been struck from our Chapter 91. Thank you, Inga, yeah.
It's only in the urban growth boundary because that's the only place where ADUs are allowable at this point within county jurisdiction, right? Yeah.
Correct, as residentially zoned property within urban growth boundaries.
Yeah, so all the other amendments that we're talking about are exclusive farm use zone and forest conservation zone. But this, because that's where typically we have the mandatory zoning requirements from the state. But in this one instance regarding accessory dwelling units inside the urban growth boundaries, we also have a mandatory amendment from the state. All right, so these will be coming to you in a couple weeks for a public hearing. And if you have any other questions at this time, let us know. Otherwise, we'll be back in two weeks.
All right, well, thank you. Any further questions? Greg, question for you. Were you looking for a formal motion from the board? I do see a suggested motion in the agenda materials, or you're just informing them that you're bringing it to them on the 16?
So, either way, we don't necessarily need a formal motion, I don't believe. But, yeah, I couldn't recall how we were doing work sessions as far as, you know, moving something forward, whether that needed a motion these days or not. So, it's up to the board.
Do you have any comments?
I would rather you have a motion pushed forward.
Well, I would then move to, let's see, direct staff to move forward with holding a hearing at first reading to amend Development Code Chapters 53, 55, 60, 91, and 94 to reflect state mandated code changes.
I'll second the motion.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Well, thank you for your work. And I can see where there'll be some clarification going forward. But this looks like a really good effort to clarify some of these zoning issues. So, thank you, and I guess keep it moving.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
All right. Well, we're pretty much on time or slightly ahead of schedule. Discuss amending supplemental budget number 2121. Jennifer, are you ready?
I am ready. Good morning.
Good morning.
I am here today to discuss supplemental budget 2012-1. There are seven funds that I need to discuss with you guys today. And I am just going to start down the list of the issues and take them one by one. Please stop me if you have any questions. It's quite a large, a large list. It can get a little overwhelming. So, the first fund that we have on the list would be the general fund. And there is a net appropriation increase And that is broken down as follows. Within the General Government Operations Program, there is an increase of $2,780,000. That contains an appropriation transfer from contingency to the criminal justice program to allow the county to move forward with the criminal justice system improvements. And that takes $2 million from contingency. There is also an appropriation transfer from GIS contingency with the intent to purchase two years of pictometry, which will aid the county assessors in identifying properties for reappraisal. And that will take $80,000 from GIS contingency. And then, we are also asking for an appropriation increase to add budget authority for COVID-19-related expenditures. And it is anticipated that there would be approximately $700,000 of appropriation increase and corresponding $700,000 in new revenue from the CARES Act. Any questions on the general government side?
No.
Okay. Within the general fund in public safety operations, there is an appropriation increase of $429,581. Of that, $79,727 would be to pay for EOC-specific training and small unmanned aircraft system search and rescue emergency management equipment. And that would be due to receipt of grants from Homeland Security for public safety. And then, we are also, yes?
Can I ask for an interpretation of small unmanned aerial search and rescue equipment? Is that a drone?
I am assuming, yes, that is a drone.
Yes, it is.
Thank you, Greg and Jen.
Yes, it is.
Thank you.
We are also then coming forward to essentially true up the drug treatment court budget. There was higher-than-anticipated SAMSA grant carryover of approximately $161,303. Their beginning fund balance was $117,896. And then, there is a higher-than-anticipated grant award from the Criminal Justice Commission, excuse me, in the amount of $70,655. Now, however, very anticipating actually having to decrease... Now, however, they're anticipating actually having to decrease their budget by approximately $51,000, but at the time of building in this request, we did not know that at that time. I see honestly no harm in leaving it in there as is, however, we can change it if you'd That would be the public safety portion. Are there any questions on that?
I think that's probably fine, to leave it as is. Unclear what will happen with CJC dollars moving forward, end up being increased because of COVID-related activities or decreased because of budget shortfalls.
Yeah.
Seems fine.
Okay. And then moving on to Health Operations, I do need to state that there is a typo that should be $787,246, not $47, in appropriation increase. It is correct in the resolution, but for some reason I added a dollar while doing the agenda checklist. So within that, there is an appropriation increase for 4.5 new FTE. One would be a CD nurse manager at $184,952. OHA Community Partner Outreach Worker, and that's $140,236, plus $364 in travel budget. A DCBS Oregon Marketplace Outreach Worker, which is $63,500, plus $9,400 in travel and There's a .5 FTE Tobacco Alcohol Drug Abuse Prevention Worker, and that would be $74,511. Developmental Diversity Service Coordinator, which is a 1.0 FTE, is $134,283, and there is an appropriation increase to cover additional local Medicaid medical match of $180,000. There is increased grant funds that were received by Health that is the reason for the asking an increase in appropriation. And then correspondingly, the contingency in Developmental Diversity Division would be increased $339,467 as a result of this new revenue. Are there any questions on that piece?
So, a good, a good column to make the air, Jen. And is the, is this all from the CARES Act grant, or?
No.
What's the major source of the funding?
It just, on my sheet, unfortunately, I don't see Sandy on here. It said that there were increased grant funds received by Health, and it looks like they're just falling under State Public Health Fund. I can certainly look into that and get a little more specific for you and get back to you if you'd like.
But the main question is, these are all grant-related additions?
Yes.
Okay.
Commissioner, when, when the budget was put together a year ago, they did an anticipated grant, and they came in, this is Health's first adjustment to their biennium budget. So you're seeing things that really have no effect right now on, on the COVID, but eventually we'll come back, we will come back in a couple months with the additional money, but this is just trueing up what the prior budget was.
Okay, thank you, that's all, that's all the detail I needed.
And some of these are grants that we receive regularly, year over year, biennium over biennium, and some of them are not, from what I can tell. There's a little bit of a mix, some of the Oregon Marketplace and Community Partner Outreach Worker, that's money that's evolving, coming from Oregon Health Authority to support our navigation-type programs, as I understand it.
Okay, and then just the last item in the General Fund would be the impact on contingency. It is a net decrease of $1,748,533, simply because there is that increase in developmental diversity that's offsetting the initial $280,000, can't talk today, intended appropriation transfer for the Criminal Justice and the pictometry purchase. Are there any other questions about the General Fund?
Doesn't, doesn't look like it.
All right, we'll move on to the Road Fund, which is extremely easy. It is a net appropriation increase of zero. It is a reclassification of appropriation authority. Public Works just needs to transfer money from contingency in the amount of $69,150, and that would be for the purchase of the sweeper that was not in the initial budget.
The item comes out of a safety review that we did within the Public Works arena, identifying what equipment we still had that could be problematic from a safety perspective, and this was one that was identified as a result of that.
Replacing old.
Old sweeper, that's correct.
All right, like I said, that one is a very, very easy one. Next would be the Employee Benefit Trust Fund. There is a net appropriation increase of $55,000, and that would be in General Government Operations. This would be for increased expenditure in materials and services for the County Wellness Program, and that is due to a receipt of a wellness rebate that was not included in the budget when it was built. Are there any questions on that?
I don't have questions on that directly, but a related question for you and Mary that can be addressed at another time, but given that we are self-insuring now, I'm curious to know what sort of data we've accumulated and what we've learned, and whether or not our rates are going up in this next fiscal year, that ball of wax.
I can, I can answer some of that. Right now, we're looking, open enrollment starts next week, so you'll know this, but we're, we're, it's an increase of 9% that we're putting on the health insurance premium. As you know, the deputies have left the, the party in the West Westers, so that had somewhat affected, and that we lost some bodies, and some healthy bodies, so our rate would have been up a little for that. With that 9% rate, we're projecting probably a $500,000. For all those good, we, we will build our reserves in the self-insurance pool. We're trying to get a couple million in that reserve, and if we lowered that any, we would, we would be skating kind of on thin ice if something should happen, so we're still building a reserve with that 9% rate.
Thank you.
All right, the next fund to discuss would be the Intra-Governmental Services Fund. There's a net appropriation increase of $1,134,069. That would be broken down as follows. There would be a General Government Transfer to Other Funds, which would be increased $562,000. This is an appropriation increase for the transfer into debt service, or the payment on 4500 Southwest Research Way. Additionally, there is another grant for Public Safety Operations in the amount of That grant came through the Bureau of Justice, and that would be, I believe, a bulletproof vest grant. And then the Debt Principal and Interest Payment, there is an increase, again, of This increase is the actual payment for the debt on 4500 Southwest Research Way, and that is funded by new rental income from Pfizer that was not built into the budget. Are there any questions? No, okay.
Keep going.
Health Management Services Fund, this is actually a net appropriation decrease of $228,487. This essentially is a housekeeping item in personal services for two floating administrative assistants, as the staff is actually paid out of Fund 521 rather than Fund 515. So corresponding to the other side of this, there is a revenue reduction in the Health Department's internal cost allocation plan to offset that. Any questions on that?
Nope.
Okay, moving on, this is the largest one for Health, and it can be a little confusing, but I will do my best. The Benton Health Center Fund, there is a net appropriation increase of $1,809,383. Within Health Operations, the original increase is $44,486,000. Within that, there is 5.75 FTE of revenue, that would be new positions, and then the 2.0 FTE of the floating admin assistance that we were just discussing, that were in Fund 515, are moved into here. There are three FTE, new mental health workers, that come to the amount of $442,613. There is 1.25 FTE of a qualified mental health professional and a physician that would come to $169,775, plus they are allocated $3,040 in materials and services. There is 1.5 FTE medical assistant and a physician, which then total $144,445. And the above-mentioned 2.0 FTE floating admin assistance, that equals the $228,487 that we decreased in Fund 515. There is also an additional increase in appropriation for support provided by developmental diversity, and that's in the amount of $60,000 in the Internal Service Fund transfer. And then, within my notes, there is an issue, and I just need to say, it shouldn't say appropriation transfer from contingency, it should say appropriation increase in the amount of $365,000 for the construction and debt payment on the Lincoln Clinic. Are there any questions on that piece? All good?
I'm not hearing any, Jen.
Okay, then I will just keep on trucking along. Oh, Mary's got something.
Oh, sorry.
To mention that the, the mental health worker, the QMHP, and the MA physician, those are revenue generating positions, is how they're being funded.
Okay, thank you.
Commissioners, also, Jen, I just wanted to interject real quick. Regarding the Lincoln Health Clinic, the county is helping fund a portion of that. The Community Health Center is actually funding about $2 million of it, and the county is funding about $1 million of it, and we are in the process of developing an agreement for the Community Health Clinic to pay back the county over time for the county's contribution.
Moving on, there is an increase in that principal and interest payment of approximately $65,000 for the first debt payment on the Lincoln Clinic. This is an appropriation transfer from contingency within the fund for that payment. And then also, there is a contingency decrease in the fund of $2,303,977. Of that, like I said, $2,65,000 would be for the appropriation for the payment, construction and debt on the Lincoln Clinic, sorry, my apologies. Are there any other questions on the Benton Health Center Fund?
No.
No? All right.
I'm not seeing any.
Okay, and then lastly, another easy one, so I like these ones particularly. The Eastland Health Center Fund, there is a net appropriation increase of $448,304. That is going directly to increase the contingency in the fund, and that essentially is the result of revenue reallocation from Fund 521 to Fund 522 to better reflect the actual clinic operations. Are there any other questions on that?
Nope, thank you.
All right. So the bottom line, the net appropriation increase in all funds, the impact is $5474,563 to the entire budget. And there is corresponding revenue for all of it.
Yes, so Jen, as a percentage of our overall biennial budget, what does that amount to?
What would that be?
I hear the calculator.
I know, and I'm trying to think without, I hate winging things off the top of my head, and I wouldn't want to say, Mary, do you know what the bottom line is for our budget for all funds?
2%.
Three hundred and something thousand, million. Yeah, oh, yeah, tiny then.
Mm-hmm, just curious.
Yeah, but, Pat, like about 1.7%.
Close now.
Rounding up.
I'll, I'll leave you to work on those columns towards the right side.
Are there any other questions or concerns, because I am going to ask that you move this forward for public hearing on June 16?
I would make that motion.
I, I think you've done a good job, and Annabelle has moved to forward this to the, to our June 16, 2020 board meeting as a public hearing.
Second.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Motion carries. Well, thank you.
Thank you.
Anything else for our finance folks? Okay?
Thank you.
Get back to work. All right, well, we are 10 minutes ahead of schedule, and we can't, we have a public meeting scheduled at 10:00, so we can do, well, we can do the consent calendar.
Yeah, we could.
Item number six.
I would move approval of the consent calendar.
I'll second.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor of the consent calendar, say aye.
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 You can also go to 7.1 as well.
I was thinking we could.
Oh, old, old business, second reading of the ordinance 2020, 0296, vehicle camping at religious institutions. So is that, Greg, are you ready for that?
So this is to, sorry, public hearing to consider the second reading of the interim ordinance that enables ordinance that enables Benton County to authorize religious institutions to offer parking, vehicle parking spaces for overnight camping for up to three vehicles. This applies outside of urban growth boundaries in unincorporated Benton County. The Board of Commissioners adopted an emergency ordinance on May 5, which went into effect immediately and will sunset or expire on July 4. This ordinance that's before you today would take effect on July 5 to continue that, continue the ordinance from its emergency status essentially, and would continue until sunsetting on December 31, 2021 unless the board repealed it before then. The one change is, in this ordinance, per your input last time, is we added a provision that at minimum, one fire extinguisher be readily available per vehicle at the camping sites, and so that has been added. If you have any questions?
Not at this time.
Are there any descriptions of the fire extinguisher, like in operating condition or, because fire extinguishers, kind of like batteries, can have a shelf life, and just because you have a red thing in the trunk doesn't really mean that you have something that'll function if needed.
That's a good point. Yeah, the code language is not that specific. It simply says shall make readily available at minimum one fire extinguisher per vehicle.
Well, and maybe it doesn't have to be in the code, but as far as enforcement or it needs to be operational?
We can certainly include that in the more detailed guidance that we give to respective churches or other institutions that are interested in pursuing this. We can remind them to make sure that any fire extinguishers they provide are appropriate and fully charged.
Vance, do we need a more appropriate motion than what I said earlier to move this forward?
Well, this is not being moved forward, you're actually, the motion I'm moving up to right now should be to conduct the second reading of the ordinance.
That's correct, there is a suggested motion in your packet.
Looks like it's on page 100.
Yep.
And that is pretty much the standard, standard motion for the second reading of ordinances. Greg did not go outside the box on this one.
I would move to conduct the second reading of ordinance number 2020-0296, adopting Chapter 40 of the Benton County Code, vehicle camping at religious institutions.
I'll second that.
All in favor of the motion, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Motion carries. So.
Mr. Chair would be, you know, since we, you have the public hearing at 10:00, we still have about five minutes, could we just stand at ease for?
Well, we're not.
You have to conduct the second reading.
Oh, that's right, sorry. But it was just a question I had.
Slowly with it.
So, go ahead and continue, Greg.
Do you want me to conduct the second reading? Greg, are you nodding?
Yes.
Please, Vance.
Before the Board of Commissioners for the State of Oregon, for the County of Benton, in the matter of adopting Benton County Code, Chapter 40, vehicle camping at religious institutions, ordinance number 2020-0296. Now, therefore, the Board of County Commissioners of Benton County ordains as follows, short title, adoption of Benton County Code, chapter regarding vehicle camping at religious institutions. And again, as Greg pointed out, this becomes effective July 5, which is a slight deviation. Typically, these new ordinances take effect 30 days after reading, but this is designed to dovetail with the expiration of the emergency ordinance, which is currently in effect.
So, is that it, Vance?
It is, and you know, Annabelle, I really can't read very slowly, it's not in my DNA.
Well, I would second Annabelle's request for a brief pause before we start our next public hearing at 10:00.
And we want to make sure we're on the 10:00 AM time certain.
Okay, we can take a five-minute break, and we will resume with our public hearing.
Thank you, Greg.
Thanks, Greg. Next up, I will open the public hearing for the transfer of the South 15th Street to the city of Philomena. So, I think, is that you, Laurel?
Yes, good morning, Commissioner. Can you hear me?
Loud and clear.
Yay. You never know. So, yeah, I think last time, when we met in May 5, I had some technical difficulties, so this morning I got it all figured out. So, yes, this is about transferring jurisdiction of South 15th Street to the city of Philomena. And like I mentioned, we met on May 5 virtually to talk about this as well. And to kind of go through it, again, the developer of the Mills Pond subdivision was doing improvements on South 15th Street, and the county said, hey, why don't we put some additional funds in, so that way we can have a complete urban street, and then we can transfer the street over to the city, so it comes out of the county's maintenance pool. And so, you agreed on the fifth to go ahead and initiate that transfer of jurisdiction, and so we set the public hearing for today, June 2, and that is where we are at. I'm not sure if we received any written testimony, if the board did last night.
I'm not aware of that.
I'm assuming Philomena City leadership is aware of this.
Oh, yeah, it's just a matter, we had to post it in case anybody in the public had some reason for not wanting the city to take over the road, but it appears that nobody really provided any testimony either way, so I think that we're probably good to go. If there's any other questions or discussion you would like to have?
Should I call for members of the, if there are members of the public to testify at this point?
I'm looking at the notice that was published, and it does hint that anybody who wishes to provide testimony today may be given the opportunity, so I would, I think it would be prudent for you to ask if anybody would like to present any testimony at this time.
Okay. Are there any members of the public that wish to testify on this issue? How many times do I ask?
Just once. They move on. No, once is good.
I'm also going to interject, I did not receive anything through the board's website or the email address, just so you know that I did not receive any testimony there.
Okay.
Okay, thanks.
Are there any questions? If not, I would entertain a motion.
Do you have to close the public hearing first?
Oh.
Public testimony portion of the public hearing.
I am closing the testimony portion of our public hearing. Now we can have a meeting motion.
I would move to approve the order to transfer jurisdiction of South 15th Street, County Road Number 26461 to the city of Philomena.
I'll second that motion.
It's been moved and seconded, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Laurel, just out of curiosity, when does the transfer take effect? I mean, when do you expect Philomena to have jurisdiction?
So, within the order, we actually gave them a timeframe, like they have to formally accept the transfer, and so that has to be done by their city council, but we put in there by the end of the year, and if they don't have it done by December 31, then we retain jurisdiction over that piece. And I have not recently spoke with Chris Workman, but it wouldn't surprise me if we get on their agenda soon, and it'll be July, August, by the time it gets transferred.
And really, that's what I was looking for, so you're sort of expecting this summer. Thank you.
Yes, they want it to happen.
All right. Well, got that taken care of, and we've already done number seven, old business, so we're on to the emergency response policy team. Who do we have up? Commissioners, this, the first part of this discussion will involve Charlie Fountain and Danielle Brown. Okay, I, looks like Danielle is there, and there's Charlie. So, we're ready for the EOC update. Charlie or Danielle?
Go forward, Danielle.
Good morning, Commissioners, thanks, Charlie. So, the EOC has been running pretty steady at this point, we've gotten most of the plans that we had been working on that we've talked about a couple of times completed. The thing that we're focusing on this week at the EOC is finding an ADA accessible isolation unit. The recreational vehicles that we have at the fairgrounds are not ADA accessible. We have contacted the company that we've rented those from to see if they have ADA accessible units, and they do not. So, this week, the liaison, excuse me, the logistics group at the EOC is exploring a couple of options that we've gotten from Lynn McKee and some other folks to see if any of they, any of those options are obtainable for an ADA accessible isolation unit for anybody that's COVID positive or symptomatic and awaiting test results. So that's the thing that we're focused on this week, and finishing up the referral process for those RVs that are the isolation units, so we have that in place if and when we need it. To date, we have not used those RVs quite yet. They're there, they're set up, they're ready to go, but we have not needed to access them yet.
And those are on a month-to-month rental agreement?
Correct.
All right, you can continue if you have more for us, Danielle.
That's what we're focusing on this week, I'll let Charlie talk about the context tracing and the epidemiology stuff, but that's what the EOC is focused on this week.
Great.
One quick question for Danielle, I know that the alternative care site issue was also another one that's a high priority for after August 15, is that still being worked on, talked about?
It is, we have a meeting on Friday to do some brainstorming and problem solving around accessing another resource after OSU resource is not available in August.
I know there was a discussion about putting out a request for proposals for sites, did you go that route and come up empty?
We have not yet, that's what the meeting on Friday is about, is really to determine the process that we need to follow in order to access, you know, in order to have a resource in place. We've talked about doing an RFP, or if we even need to go into a full RFP, perhaps we can just do a letter of intent, so that's what we need to figure out on Friday, is exactly what direction we need to go to make sure that we have a resource in place if and when we need it.
Thank you.
Okay, I think you're up, Charlie.
Okay, thank you, Commissioners. From the Epi side, you've probably seen the notice yesterday, we did have one new case, that's the first one in a week, so again, a real testimony to the community prevention that's going on and the effectiveness of that. I think we're on a good roll, and hopefully, even as we move forward, the community measures and collaborations that are in place out there will continue to be effective, although realistically, the more mixing there is, the more everyone expects some new cases, but we'll see about that. We continue to get a number of requests from community organizations and groups looking for guidance or permission to hold events, everything from races to fundraising activities to worship activities. We have basically been pointing at the state guidance, you know, indicating that we are looking towards an application for Phase 2, but as yet, as you've seen, the governor's office has not published any of the guidance attached to that. I know they are still working very actively with the various interest groups, but, you know, as we have talked about before, we have not seen even drafts of that sectoral guidance, and so have basically been holding all of those requests at arm's length and asking people to adhere to current guidance at the present time, even though they're looking at events really on into July. So, it'd probably be quite a few activities for our liaison team as the new guidance rolls out. You know, it's one concern as we look towards future of the EOC, is these ongoing, the GIC, the community liaison workload that Department Operations Center and Public Health would have a lot of trouble sustaining on our own. One additional plan that we are beginning to work on now is updating our mass vaccination plan, so we're required under our public health preparedness program to maintain a mass vaccination framework plan at all times, but we have formed a work group now to begin actively working on a targeted update. You know, we're basing a lot of that on our experience in 2010 with the H1N1 influenza mass vacs, plans we did, the state is looking at some frameworks about how they think a vaccine may be rolled out, if and when it becomes available, of course, we know nothing about that, when it might be, what it might be, how it, you know, will it be oral, will it be injectable, will it be single dose, will it take multiple, but we are already looking at sites and logistics, so we have a more targeted framework in place, which will serve us whether it's for influenza, whether it's for COVID, whether there's a vaccine or not, it's a good exercise to go through. The one other thing I want to mention on the public health side is we continue to have very close communication with OSU and their resumption planning, they're being very flexible about that, developing, you know, a number of contingencies, you know, that will all adhere to whatever the statewide higher education guidance is, but they are in close consultation with us on that. They're very robust planning if they do have on-campus activities for universal masking, for a lot of personal distancing. We think that they're doing an excellent job with that planning, also a significant and high investment plan in prevalence testing and surveillance along the lines of the TRACE study that was done and will continue to be done in Corvallis. So throughout the term, if there are- So, throughout the term, if there are students, faculty and staff active on campus and in Corvallis, it'll provide us some more real-time information about virus activity in that area. So, we're pleased with that. I think that does it from my side, if you don't have any questions.
Go ahead.
I have one question, Charlie, and that is that in the statewide data, I can see that there's been a significant downward trend in testing in general, I'm assuming because there are so many fewer symptomatic people out there. And that is a little bit concerning, because we may be seeing an increase in prevalence at the same time as we're doing less testing overall. And so, do you have any comments on that?
Well, you know, it's a tough one. You know, universal testing of asymptomatic people may find some people, but it's a significant cost, and we go through this with a lot of illnesses. Finding rare illnesses in a population by universal testing ends up being extremely expensive on a case, when calculated on a case-by-case basis. You know, it is a way that countries like South Korea approach things. One thing, you know, that we are, that's out there right now that we talked about last night, is the RFP that has been issued that local laboratories are doing their response for, and will receive those back and judge those next week, to be able, you know, with whatever's testing is going on and the surveillance that's going on, that we'd be able to jump on and do rapid wraparound testing if there are any indication of a focal outbreak in our area. But, yeah, you point out a real conundrum of how much we invest and how much we do sort of the type of background surveillance testing that TRACE was doing, you know, at significant cost.
Yeah.
It's hard.
Yeah, yeah, it's hard to find the balance. So, there's a pending request for proposals for rapid wraparound testing, you say? And that'll be in place, some sort of an agreement in the next few weeks?
Yes, so the RFP's been issued. We believe that there are three laboratories, there may be more, that are planning to respond to that, and so I think it is, well, it's early next week, but we'll receive those back and score them and make a decision, so that we have an agreement with a single lab that we're able to go to on a rapid basis to do wraparound testing.
Thank you, that's good to know.
Annabelle?
Yeah, Charlie, let me get myself off mute here. Okay.
No?
Oh, I'm sorry, I forget, I'm not at home. Got it. I keep forgetting I'm not at home. Charlie, John Harrelson raised the issue about testing at the courthouse yesterday. Have you heard of any issues of kind of things not going right, well there?
Commissioner, are you referring to contact tracing?
Contact tracing.
Oh, contact tracing, not testing.
Yeah, that's what I meant, contact tracing.
I am not, I understand some of John's concerns. It's a, you know, it's a challenge in every location, because we do business a bit differently in each location, but, you know, in any case, however we are registering people going into a public facility and into a county office, that's really just a starting point for our contact tracing team. You know, it gives us a few hints about where to go and people to start with, but it's not the be-all and end-all of the contact tracing activity. And in a setting like the courts, like the courthouse, it would be a challenge at any rate, and we'd be working very closely with John and his team, with the judges, with the court, to both protect the medical and medical privacy and integrity of those people, but also to be sure to not compromise any of the legal system. So, it's always going to be a little bit more complex at the courthouse, but I think the plan that's there will be an adequate starting point from our point of view.
Yeah, we, this is Danielle, we also supported the sheriff with lending one of our staff to help with the tracking of people that are coming in and out of the building. So, they're entering the name and contact information for individuals that are coming in and out on the contact tracing document that IT builds. So, they have some additional support. The sheriff, Sheriff Jackson, reached out and said, you know, he didn't have enough staff to help support that, and because most of his staff are uniformed officers, it changed the dynamics of the request. So, we lent him one of our staff to help support that. They said that all staff will be coming in through one of the badge doors, so they'll know the staff that are coming in and out, but everybody else is being tracked using that contact tracing form that IT built.
Commissioners, Matt Weatherall is also on the line this morning, and Matt and Lori Starha were responsible for working with each facility as related to access and contact tracing. Matt, is there anything you would like to share? I know that you've been working as well with the sheriff's office and the DA.
My understanding is that there were some issues when it first started, as far as where they were doing the tracing down in the basement. That was moved to the first floor or the main entrance, I think, two days after it first started last week. I have not heard of any issues with that move or anything going on regarding the contact tracing with folks going in and out of the courthouse, and it's an interesting dynamic with two tenants, you know, county employees, and then the courts themselves, and working through that. Sheriff Jackson actually was a great help in moving the reopening forward with that, and, you know, we realize that it's a dynamic situation, and we'll be making adjustments and things as these move forward to meet everybody's needs.
Great. I had a question for you, Charlie. You mentioned the contacts with OSU. I guess, how frequently do you check in with those folks, and who are you dealing with?
So, we actually talk at least twice a week. So, there is one meeting that is with Brian Lee, Dave Busby, Dr. Thompson, as well as with Jenny Habenreiser, who is the Health Services Director, as well as an Assistant Provost, and the other person that we're in direct contact with on those is Dan Larson, who's the Vice Provost for Student Affairs, and he is OSU's Coronavirus Response Coordinator. So, basically, the top level of folks who are in charge of their planning. The other person who's deeply involved at the EOC is Mike Bamberger, who is their Emergency Preparedness Coordinator, and he is liaison to the EOC to make sure that there's alignment on that level as well.
Great. Any other questions for Charlie? Or was that the end of your report?
Yeah, I have nothing else unless there are other questions.
I have one on the next, probably talking with Brian Lee. We will be discussing whether we'll continue these Thursday board meetings on a regular basis, or have them on people's calendars, but not necessarily have a board meeting every Thursday. And I didn't know if you and Danielle were going to be able to stay on the call, but if you can, then when that topic comes up, we would like your input.
Definitely stay on.
Okay. Next up, 8.2, Brian Lee, the discussion of the Phase Two reopening. Brian?
Yes, morning, folks. So, I had Charlie and Dr. Thompson review our Phase Two reopening letter, which is basically our application. It's relatively short and straightforward, just one page, and I believe I got electronic signatures from Commissioner Malone, as well as Charlie and Bruce. So, if we're still okay with your permission, I'd like to submit that today. We do not have 100% clear guidance. I know there was some draft guidance that was sent out on, I believe, Friday, and that's all we have to work with. The rumor is the governor's doing a press briefing tomorrow morning at 11:00, and they will be rolling out all the Phase Two guidance at that time. So, I expect that we should have it maybe by late this evening, and then they'll roll it out tomorrow. So far, we have met all of our metrics, we're still monitoring all that, and other than that one case that Charlie mentioned, we've been pretty much on the decline or the flat line for a bit here with COVID-19 cases, which is a good time. Oh, we still are receiving PPE reporting with the state and everything there, so we have definitely sufficient PPE for both the hospital and our first responders, so we're really happy about that, and we're redoing our inventory and cleaning up some processes. So, I guess my first thing is, if you guys are okay going into Phase Two, I'd like to submit that today. So, I'll start with that piece and then give you the other point of discussion and update.
Okay, Suzanne?
Brian, I just had one question about the letter. It sounds like in the letter we are attesting that we have sufficient personal protective equipment for all of our own first responders, as well as for the hospital, and that made me a little bit uncomfortable. I believe Samaritan is ensuring and attesting to the fact that they have their own 30-day supply. Just wanted to make sure that we were not indicating more responsibility than we actually have.
Right, so for the requirements of Phase Two, it's only saying you have to have it from first responders, which we have, but we also have, other than gowns, in terms of just masks and gloves, we have enough PPE to support Good Samaritan's needs as well, with most of the PPE, and Good Samaritan also has at least a 30-day supply on hand right now, today. So, with all the PPE in our county and under our control, you know, it'd be safe to say we have close to 60 days of PPE for the hospital, as well as 30 days at least for first responders in our area. And I know, like, Corvallis Fire Department has at least 30-day supply of PPE for all their medical units and staff.
Okay. Thank you.
Annabelle?
So, everything, except everything goes as well as we think it could, moving into Phase Two, what happens, I guess, are we ready to meet the need if we don't, if we all of a sudden get a spike? You know, spike?
Yes, and I know Charlie kind of touched on that with our plans. We have a host of plans in place, pretty much ready to go, off the shelf. There may be a few little things we'd have to clean up on the fly, but we have our morgue overflow plan, our mask care sheltering, our isolation or non-congregate sheltering. We have an alternate care site plan for hospital surge set up now, and we're going to refine that here for our after-August 9th date on Friday. We have obviously our contact tracing, our mobile testing site, behavioral health, and this general reopening plan. So, we do have a lot of plans in place, and we're keeping dialogue going with obviously the Health Department and other EOC staff, to let them know we could call people back in, we could have the surge, we could need help in very short notice. Maybe not an hour, but 24-hour notice kind of thing, we need people back in and keeping this thing going. So, I would say we do have sufficient response capability. The main thing will be mobilizing the staff to come back into the EOC, as well as out in the field to, say, deliver PPE and things like that. So, we do have that stuff in place and ready to go.
Great, that is critical to, I mean, we're, we like the current trend, but we've got to be well-prepared in case that trend reverses on us. Brian, I've had a question on the date. We can submit that we think Benton County is ready for Phase Two, and from the governor's office last Friday, it sounded like there would be a quick turnaround time on getting approval. What's the actual date that Benton County could be in Phase Two?
What we had heard was the 6th, correct, when we were on the call last Friday?
That's what I heard.
That's...
But...
Well, when we were on the call with the governor's office...
That's why I'm asking.
Yeah, we heard the 6th.
Brian?
Yeah, I had heard it was the 5th, but apparently, if you guys heard the 6th from the governor's office, I would go with that. So, we can adjust the date in the letter. 21 days from the 15th would be the 5th, so if they're saying after 21 days, then it would be the 6th.
Yeah.
So, a lot of controversy there.
Let's clarify that, add one constituent with the bowling alley, and it would make a difference to them. And my arithmetic says 21 days is Thursday, which means we could be open on June 5th, this Friday. But I think there's a lot of talk about 14 days and 21 days, but not pinning down the exact date. So, hopefully, tomorrow the governor will clarify that, but I think, assuming we're ready to go into Phase Two, it would be nice to get a specific date when Benton County can reopen, and I'm sure we're not the only people that that would make a difference.
What you're asking for is we need some certainty.
I will find out right now.
Okay. That would be great. Do we need a motion to...
Commissioners, I do think you need a motion, and before you decide to offer a motion, I would like to pose a question directly to our staff. Charlie, Danielle, and Brian, are all three of you supportive of Benton County moving to Phase Two reopening?
I definitely am here, this is Brian.
I also am.
Am as well, and have had this discussion. Dr. Thompson couldn't be here this morning, but he is supportive as well.
Great.
Thank you.
Great, great question, all right. Were there any other questions about Benton County entering Phase Two?
I guess I just have a question around what would trigger having to stop, I mean, if we go into Phase Two, what would be the criteria that we would expect to hear in order to stop if we have to? I'd like to hear from you, yeah.
I can chime in on that. So, the criteria are if we cannot track, basically, less than 30% of our cases to a known positive, that's one indicator. The other one is a significant increase in hospital admissions related to COVID-19. Those are kind of the main thresholds, increase in cases, but the main thing is the sufficient increase in hospital admissions, and then an increase in the ratio of the number of tests we're doing to the number of positives.
Okay.
So, anything that would indicate widespread community spread, that's where they want to say, you know, cut it off, stop Phase Two, and they, the rumor is they want to give us a couple of weeks to basically look at that, and then if nothing changes, if we can't track contact trace everyone appropriately or anything like that, then we can slide back into Phase One, or become more restrictive again.
Okay.
Don't know all the mechanisms in place that would actually do that, but that's what the OHA guidance is generally saying, is we do, we are at risk of going back into Phase One if we're not really diligent still in Phase Two, which Phase Two could last the next 18 months, for all we know.
Right.
Right, this is from last Friday's governor's information, but... This is from last Friday's governor's information, but like you say, Phase Two can last a long time, and there will be adjustments within Phase Two, maybe regarding number of people allowed in indoor spaces at, at one time, or outdoor. And so I think, my understanding was, there could be some adjustments up or down and, and still be in Phase Two. But hopefully, we get a little more clarity. But appreciate the, the clear signal that you think Benton County is ready for Phase Two. Any other discussion?
I just want to thank all of our staff for the great effort that you all have gone to, to have really sound plans to house people, to care for people, and to do the tracing, testing, tracing, and containing all the epidemiological work. I, I feel comfortable with where we are. It's going to be, hopefully, a controlled roller coaster.
Well, and like I said before, it's critical to have our communication folks make it really clear that we are not, like you said last week, Charlie, we are not in Phase 10. We are in Phase Two, and we got there because we behaved ourselves, and most of us, anyway, followed the guidelines. And we need to emphasize that those guidelines are still in place. So there's no other discussion? I would entertain a motion?
I would move approval of the letter authored by our EOC staff to move us as Benton County into Phase Two.
I'll second that.
One slight correction, EOC staff?
I thought, I thought I said EOC staff.
I, I heard AOC.
Excuse me.
Just remember. All right. Did I hear a second?
I did second.
Okay. It's been moved and seconded. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye?
Aye.
Well, thank you for your efforts, and hopefully, we get more clarity before the end of the week. And, and one of those things is, what's the actual date that we can reopen? So...
Brian, if you will shoot me an email once you have verified what date, and then I can share that with the board?
Yes, absolutely. And I, I have an email out, and Kate texted theramides as well, so we're waiting on a concrete answer there.
Great.
So my next...
Okay.
Next, I have two other items. The next one is regarding the disaster declaration that expires June 30th, 2020. I talked at length with the state, as well as kind of reread our charter and our EOP. And the bottom line is that we'll want to extend our disaster declaration. The length of time is up to the board. I'd recommend either 90 or 120 days. That'll basically get us to September or October, when OSU's starting back up.
I like that.
The reason why we want to extend our disaster declaration, there's really only one con, but the pro is that we are able to do anything within the emergency powers and provide emergency protective measures for our population in Benton County. And, and we can get FEMA reimbursement, as long as we have that declaration in place. The federal declaration could terminate at pretty much any moment, and then that will cut off our FEMA reimbursement, but we could still be allowed to basically use some of our emergency powers, that Vance can really probably summarize a lot better, if we need them. So that, there, that's the advantage to not letting our disaster declaration expire just yet, and to extend it. And I know Vance said last time, you can always terminate it before the 90 days or the 120 days, whatever the extension is. And that's just one option. The only downside, really, is kind of the disaster fatigue. You know, the longer we have a disaster declaration in place, basically, the, to some degree, the less impact it may have. But if we need it, that's what it's there for. And that's really the only downside I have. The other one is arguable to downside. If we were to have another disaster, be it from a mob fire, or evacuations, or, you know, a major flood, whatever it is, we could need to implement a second disaster declaration. So I just, I don't think that they would compete with each other necessarily in this case, and they might actually go synergetically together, but I just wanted to throw that out there as a, a possibility. I don't know what the implications of having two disaster declarations really are. So that's all I had on the disaster declaration piece.
Fortunately, we have Vance in the room, who is going to tell us.
He's going to give you an opinion.
Okay.
Tell you. I think if, if there's a second disaster, my initial thought is that we would simply amend our current disaster declaration to include whatever circumstances are triggering the need for expansion of the emergency powers to include response to that subsequent declaration. So we'd really just be building on what we, you would have in place. And I sincerely hope we don't have to do that, but, you know, Brian, I think your point is very good, and we are heading into fire season, so you never know.
Right.
And in terms of the date, Brian, do we know if the students, we, we don't know, but do we have an idea of when the students might be coming back? Because in my mind, if we're going to be having students coming back to OSU earlier rather than later, it may be prudent to have a longer emergency declaration.
I think so, yeah.
For example, if they come back in September.
I believe it's mid-September. Early September, the first prep, the, the initial students, like the RAs, may come back for orientation, and then mid-September, larger student body?
So if we take Brian's timeframe of 90 to 120 days, and we push, we extend our current declaration out to through October 31st, what do y'all think about that date? That's roughly 120 days.
I think it makes sense.
I really like that idea, going all the way to the end of October. I think that gives us enough time after OSU is in session to really determine if there are any ramifications.
Okay.
And our, our current disaster declaration expires at the end of this month?
Correct. Midnight on June 30th.
Okay. So four months?
Yeah, I think so.
So if, if you're okay with it, then I will bring before the board on the June 16th, a, an extended, a declaration extending the date from June 30th through October 31st.
Okay.
And I think having a good story to go with that would be really important as to why we're, why we're doing that, okay?
She's right there, right now.
All right.
First draft.
Now, I think, and I think that's, that's very prudent, that we're, we're talking about protecting the community, basically. And that includes the community of students that come in.
Yep. They will bring in a different level of risk.
Yes, they will.
It's probably not a bad thing to have our declarations of safety net underneath that.
That's right.
And Commissioners, this is Charlie. If I can add, it also gets us through public school and, and other sort of large group gathering planning. You know, some of those plans are pending, and certainly, those schools will want to know what they're doing ahead of time.
Absolutely.
But it will allow us to have these operations going again during the first phases of those gatherings, to be able to monitor and sort of adjust our operations to whatever that new fall normal is. So not just OSU, although that, that is a significant population addition, but that's not our, our only sort of gathering concern at that time of year.
Yeah.
Well, and I think it's fairly likely that our K through 12 folks will try really hard to open on some kind of limited, limited basis. Brian, does the, going to the end of October, October 31st, fit your idea?
Yes, it does. And kind of everything that you guys said, just to ensure there's plenty of time to make sure there's just a time to review what, what the impact of the students coming back in are, and make sure we have everything in place.
Okay.
So just wanted to, yeah. I think that makes sense.
Thank you. Do we need a motion to?
No.
Move this to our June 16th meeting?
Answer, you wanting a motion, or not?
I don't need one, no.
Okay. Anything else for us, Brian?
Yes, the last piece was just regarding, as we discussed, kind of some of the ramp down in staffing of the EOC. Obviously, we want to keep the PIO J group in place as much as we can to support Health Department needs and things like that. It's getting pretty quiet around here, so I can throw in arbitrary dates, but basically, we're just being a couple of weeks into Phase Two. If we're not seeing any significant spike, to sort of start our phase doubt, will we start demobilizing to perception, and just still be in touch regularly, virtually? But we're just having dialogue about that, and I've been chatting with Charlie and Danielle about it as well. No date set in stone, nothing concrete, but that's just what we're starting to think here as we, as we move ahead. And of course, there could always be another disaster that we have to start focusing on. So we want to be ready to ramp back up at a moment's notice, and that, that'll be the other caveat, is if we quote-unquote "demobilize" and go virtual, we'll need to sort of have an agreement with EOC staff and directors to be able to mobilize them again, obviously arbitrarily within 24 hours, but on short notice, to handle whatever might come up. Because if the Health Department suddenly needs support in mobile testing sites, and we find out on a Friday afternoon that they need that set up by Saturday, we, we hopefully could mobilize and get things going very quickly, rather than wait through the weekend.
We are hosting a meeting next week between city of Corvallis and Benton County Administration, the Health Department, and both our, of our EOC directors, to discuss exactly this topic, about how do we go about demobilizing the EOC? What does that look like? What's the proper timing? So there'll be additional information that will be coming as a result of that particular meeting.
Well, this, this sounds like a great plan, Brian. Use the experience that we've obtained in the last two and a half months and throttle back on the, the current effort, but be ready to ramp up quickly, I think, is the ideal solution to, going forward if things remain calm. So appreciate that, all the hard work that you folks have done in the last 10, 10 weeks or so, and have, I guess, make sure the, the plans are readily available to respond to whatever, whatever comes up, so...
Yep, absolutely.
I, I see Kate Portia is on the call. Kate, did you, are you just observing, or do you have an update for us?
Hey, good morning. I was mostly observing, and, but I did have one update for you regarding the CBBG application, the letter of intent for the CBBG program. Again, this is a program that'll go out to the rural parts of Benton County, so it's exclusive of Corvallis city limits businesses. But we have put in our letter of interest, and again, this is the, the really cool joint venture between Kent Weiss from Paul Tina City and Rebecca Taylor of the county. They've worked together to put this, put this together. But, so we've got that letter of interest in and going. We will need to hold a public hearing on that, and so Rebecca's going to help get that on the schedule with you guys in terms of handling the notice and, and doing that. There is another pot of funds related to the CBBG, and we do know that both the men's and women's shelters are in need of some help, but we're working on figuring out how best that would fit. And of course, while those are within the city limits of Corvallis, we are able to make a proportionate ask for a quantity of money for the number of folks from outside of Corvallis that come in to use those shelters. And we think this could be a good opportunity. So wanted to let you know, we're working on that as a possible second application, and we'll bring that forward for you once we have it ready to roll.
Okay, great. Van?
I do have a question for you, Kate, about how the follow-up phone calls have been going with all of the area businesses that you all were going to make after distributing your reopening guide. I'm curious to know what, whether there's any, what we're hearing, and how, how folks are doing out there.
Yeah, and so we had a call with our partners yesterday, and I would say, I think, because of, mostly because of some scheduling, they, they received the list of the information Thursday, but as of yesterday, the partners have not yet begun making those phone calls. We started calling a few folks, but it's been pretty minimal. I think that work will really get underway this week. What I, what we have been hearing so far, again, is some continued challenges with restaurants, and we've already talked about this, who basically have to do some percentage less volume, a half, a third, but still have the same food costs, space costs, things like that. We're hearing a lot of challenges for any businesses that are in the event type of industry. So our hotels, our caterers, event spaces, really, really, really challenging, trying to help them out. We know, we can kind of see the writing on the wall for that. So that's, that's pretty much been what, what we're hearing so far, but we'll continue to report back as those calls are being made. I think I'll have more information for you Thursday and next week as well.
Thank you.
Well, and as far as restaurants, I think I've heard some discussion of using, allowing them to use public outdoor space to expand their areas so they can come closer to a reasonable number of people that, that they can serve.
Indeed, you're absolutely right, Commissioner Malone. And in fact, we are finalizing that. We have a call this afternoon with our city partners to finalize that for not just downtown areas of Corvallis, but also Monroe or some other areas. And then we plan, like I said before, I think we plan to share this with, with our rural city managers as well, if they want to replicate how we've done it. Additionally, Paul Balada and his community development group, they were able to make an administrative change to a part of the code that basically indicates that parking lots, so this is more traditional businesses that have off-street parking. Right now, our code says, you have to use that space for parking, right? And so what we're looking at is a suspension of part of those rules that would then allow businesses to use some of their parking spaces for additional room for retail, for seating, for queuing, whatever it is they may need. So that'll help our businesses, not so much in, in the urban core, but in the other areas who have parking lots associated with them. So we're kind of considering this a, a positive one-two punch of ways to, to help businesses expand their physical space.
And take advantage of our summer weather.
Indeed, absolutely. It's the perfect timing for it.
Great. Any other questions for you? Kate? Well, Van, did you, did you have anything else for us, Kate?
No, that's it. Thank you very much for letting me intrude.
Oh, glad to have you. Next up, item C, and I mentioned it earlier, about our Thursday board meetings, roughly 10 weeks ago, we added a, a second board meeting every week, kind of like Brian was talking about. Things are winding down. A lot of the big decisions for policy have already been made. So I think it's an appropriate time to discuss if we need to keep meeting every Thursday. One suggestion would be to not meet, but leave that... that 10 o'clock time slot on people's schedules, so if something comes up, we're able to have a well-attended meeting. Any thoughts?
I think that we seem to be at a good point to suspend those Thursday meetings, but I agree, I would like to retain that date on our calendars so that we can quickly constitute a meeting we need to.
Be almost as responsive as Brian and his EOC folks, but not quite 24 hours, maybe 48 hours. So, it sounds like we have agreement on that. Does that, do we suspend the meeting this week on Thursday?
So, we will start with suspending this Thursday's meeting?
That's what I'm asking.
Okay.
My sense is that we're there.
I think so, too.
Okay. Last week, I thought we would be dealing with Phase 2 and some decisions there, but fortunately, Phase 2 is relatively straightforward, and the metrics are already, the seven criteria are lined out, and we've been doing them for many weeks, so I think we will not have a board meeting. Well, earlier, I asked Charlie and Danielle if, maybe hang around for this part of the discussion. Do you have any thoughts, Charlie, or Danielle? Oh, Danielle had to leave, but, so you're, Charlie, and then maybe Brian.
Yeah, this is Charlie. Thank you very much, Commissioner. Now, I think, you know, having our whole system on standby, everyone's got other responsibilities they need to get to, and I think maintaining readiness is appropriate at this time.
Well, and one advantage for somebody like you, Charlie, is you could have this blocked out on your calendar and then be able to get back to your regular work. So, you can thank us later, but... Brian, did you have any thoughts on the Thursday meeting? I'll take that for a yes, Brian. Kate?
I am totally fine with that, and I think once a week is completely appropriate, and then add it back in, sort of like you're, like a mini EOC, you can add it back in should you need in the future.
Right, right.
Okay. It sounds pretty unanimous, and that we will not have a board meeting this Thursday. Our next board meeting would be next Tuesday, the 9th, 9 o'clock, at the Sunset Building.
Just one point of clarification, Commissioner Malone. Next week, I believe, is goal setting.
That's correct.
So, just a little bit different format than the work session style meeting. So, next week with goal setting, we are not planning on live streaming the meeting because that's a seven-hour-long meeting.
Uh-huh.
Yep, okay. I just wanted to make sure that we had that clarity before we said that we'd see everyone next Tuesday.
Okay, thank you.
In fact, we'll see everyone in two Tuesdays from now, since next week is goal setting.
Kind of back on our regular schedule.
I don't know.
I'd also like to share that next Tuesday, we will still have updates from, or to the board from our staff.
Right.
Like we have typically had. So, Charlie, Danielle, and Brian Lee will be on your agenda for next week.
Where will we be holding that meeting?
Wherever you're comfortable to join, because it's not going to be a Facebook Live meeting. We don't necessarily have to do it in this room. And given that it's such a long meeting, I would encourage that you attend from somewhere comfortable.
Like home?
Like your lazy boy recliner.
Just so we have the spacing.
Exactly. It's just such a long meeting.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you. Sorry we're up.
But those that are physically, want to be physically present, it would be this room?
Yes, they could certainly gather in this room, or, you know, Joe and Vance are already downtown in their own offices, they could gather downtown.
Okay.
But there's technology and spacing allowable for meeting participants, staff, county staff, meeting participants to either hook out or to the furniture if they prefer.
Do you have a...
Oh, sorry.
Goal setting.
No, that's fine.
Okay.
Do you have a preference, Joe?
Actually, my preference is, is if we're limiting the number of people that are involved in that meeting, just to have it down at our board's office, because it would likely be myself and the chair as my guest advances in participating. And with that room being so small, it can accommodate a few of us, but if all the Commissioners were planning on attending in person, we should have it here.
Right, right.
As a consideration.
So, I think we need your feedback, Commissioners.
I think that this works, if we already set the setup here already, why not use it?
Do you plan on coming in person on Tuesday?
Yes, probably.
Do you plan on coming in person?
I can go either way. I don't have a strong preference. It is a long time and a closed space with a lot of people.
I also can join by Zoom from my office, too. I mean, it doesn't have to be here. I can join by Zoom from the office, too.
Yes, yeah, you can join via your surface code from the office, your home, wherever you would prefer, but if it's your preference that you attend here...
It doesn't matter, really. That doesn't bring an issue up. I do have a meeting scheduled in the conference room at the office tomorrow, for a meeting with a client.
Well, let's get this...
Yeah, but just to say.
So, Commissioners, how about if we do this? Let's say we're going to meet here. The preference is, is that you still work remotely.
Right.
If you want to come in, let's meet here. That way, in case more of you show up, we're prepared for that, because we had a situation a month or so ago where we were not prepared, and we had to make some changes at the last minute. So, I think it's safer to use this room, because there's more space, and that affords you the opportunity to come or not come, depending on what works for you. I think Commissioner Malone and I will be present, as we were, for the previous goal settings in person at this location.
And it's likely that I will be present for half of the meeting. I haven't seen the agenda yet, so I'm not sure what it looks like, but once I take a look at it, it's likely that I'll be present for part of it. Also, Commissioners, of note is that Nick Kirk is our new Criminal Justice Assistant Improvement Project Manager, so during tomorrow's goal-setting meeting, Nick will not be joining us, as he's in his room. So, at this point, given that prior to Nick joining our office's staff, Jonny Stokes has been handling the goal-setting responsibility that will fall back on to her place now. However, just with the tight notice and what were the work that we're anticipating in the JIF of Phase 2, it is my strong preference that she not take minutes on next Tuesday, and that we utilize Erica Maitlowe. So, Erica, just like she has been, and hi, Erica, thank you for all your service.
Thank you.
Excuse me. So, it's my preference that Erica steps in for goal-setting next week, and then in July, it's likely, I don't know if we'll be in the depot, but it's likely that we'll have Jonny Stokes at the meeting in July.
Okay. Sounds like we have that question settled?
Yeah, and I just wanted to add in that, you know, I do have a meeting with a couple of citizens tomorrow, and I asked that they come into the board office, and where we have the spacing, the distancing, and so I'll be using that conference room for at least an hour.
Okay. Teresa, are you still on the call?
Yes.
Yes.
Did you catch that Commissioner Hara Mio is having a meeting with a member of the public in the office tomorrow?
Right, and I will get a hold, well, that will be me.
Yes.
So, no problem.
Okay.
What time are you having the meeting?
It's from 1:00 to 2:00, and Jeff and Debbie Lamb are coming in, wanting to talk about some issues they have.
Great, okay. No worries. We will make sure that the room is available and that you're good to go. Thank you for letting us know.
Yep.
Okay. Do you have anything else for us, Joe?
I do not, Commissioners. Thank you for your time this morning.
Any, I think we were kind of slipped into other, anything else? If not, meeting adjourned.
I know, Vance, I don't know what...